June 16th, meeting of the Marin water district operations committee. And we need a roll call.
Good morning, Director Ronjev Smith, Kush.
I think I'm here.
I need some coffee, I apologize. Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Monte Schmidt.
Here.
And Director Larry Russell.
Here.
Okay. We need a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on the agenda?
There are none.
Roll call, please.
Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Director Smith.
Hi.
Vice Chair Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Russell.
Hi.
Thank you.
Public comment on items not on the agenda, seeing nobody from the public, I doubt we will. Suppose they could be online, though.
There are none.
Okay. Okay, item two, pipeline extension agreement.
Good morning, Directors. Crystal Yasman, Director of Engineering. We have for your review this morning, a pipeline extension agreement for development Tiburon. But before we get into the details of the actual project itself, we wanted to give the board a short PowerPoint presentation on pipeline extension agreements and how they are developed and how they come to the board. Now, most new service connections never come to the board for review or consideration. We have a process to, you know, add a new meter for a single family home that folks go through. But in certain instances, if the development is large enough and has meets certain aspects of the development, then we have to negotiate a pipeline extension agreement. So now the new service connections that we do on a regular basis are reported in the monthly GM report. You'll see it histogram in that report, so you can see the new connections that we are managing each month. But for pipeline extension agreements, a bit more complicated, and I'm gonna pass this over to Joseph Isens, our manager for engineering support services and development services, and he's gonna give you a presentation.
Good morning, everybody. Happy to see you all. I have to first apologize. When I was reviewing this presentation this morning, I realized that I started with the assumption that we'd all agree pipeline extension, the term pipeline extension is is self-explanatory. I didn't prepare a what is a pipeline extension. So if we could all agree, I can I could start the presentation. Thank you. Apologies for that. Okay. Thank you very much. So given that, we know what a pipeline extension is, we can talk about what what types of projects will need a pipeline extension. So a pipeline extension, of course, as Crystal mentioned, would start with a request for water service. And the code section gives us some some requirements for approval for the district to approve a water service installation. We can look at these two in particular of this code section. Number one, the property to be served is fronting an existing district main. So property line, there's the road, most likely, and the water main, there it is, you'd qualify for service. Or the structure to be served is within 125 feet of the property line, fronting a water main. So if we can say yes to those, we can grant a new service to that property. But if we can't, we go down to section B here. Applicants who cannot meet condition one or condition two must arrange for a pipeline extension pursuant to our code. So once, once we've we've examined the property and determined whether or not it can meet section one or section two of that code, we will look at some factors. And one important thing to note is that approval of a pipeline extension is subject to discretion of the Board of Directors. So we will determine, the district will determine whether or not pipeline extension is the method of service that we think makes sense to provide water service to the project. So some of the things we look at here is the existing water system adequate for the project. Commonly, you'll see the fire flow. The fire flow is the important factor in determining whether our existing water system can provide fire flow set by the fire department for the project, as an example. Will any of our existing customers have a negative impact if we extend our facility? Add additional demand to the existing water system? Have to make sure the project has received its discretionary approval from the lead agency. We don't provide water to any project that has not done that. We're gonna make sure the extension does not violate any current district rules. So this would beg the question, well, what about scenarios where these things, these items we're reviewing, for example, is the existing water system adequate? Well, what do we do then? What if it's not adequate, for example, for fire flow? Well, the this section of the code, the additional cost section places the responsibility on the developer, property owner, to pay for whatever upgrades the district determines necessary to serve the project adequately, whether that be fire flow, for example. It can be any of these improvements, including, you know, if we have an inadequate tank, storage tank serving that system. It can be upgrade of distribution piping required to meet a particular fire flow. So those are some examples of what the developer would be on the hook for.
So let me just stop here for a moment. So you'll notice that water supply is not included in this code. Our 2020 urban water management plan showed that we had adequate water supply based on historical weather scenarios. Although we did go further and start to look at extreme drought scenarios, and that led us to the roadmap and ultimately to water supply projects. So as we move into our next iteration of our urban water management plan, next year, we're gonna start working on that. We will be taking into account the housing element and the increased population growth expected from that, which was not factored into the 2020 plan. So the 2025 urban water management plan, we'll take a look at that. And this is our opportunity here to add water supply is in terms of a developer burdened cost. And so as we finish that urban water management plan, we may wish to amend this ordinance, and then we'll also be conducting a connection fee study to look at what is the the cost of additional water supply if needed. So that will be a future task for us. And for now, what we do is we look a little more locally at distribution pipeline diameters, we look at pressures, we look at fire flow at the hydrants, and the developer then does pay in if needed to up upsize a water main in the street to meet their requested demand. So.
I thought we had pretty well settled on that issue of zero impact. In other words, an offset to similar to George Lucas's offset. So I think that's kind of where I remember us ending up. Maybe I jumped the gun on that and just assumed that, but is that kind of what you remember too?
Well, we're going there. We're headed that direction, yes.
So not for these guys?
Not for these guys.
Yeah, I don't think there's been any board decision regarding historical offsets at this point.
Yeah, this is getting close to home here, this one.
Yeah, this is a the what's on the table today is a development Tiburon. So, all right, we can continue. Thanks, Joseph.
Sure. Alright, so once we've looked at those aspects and.
Red on, there you go. Good.
I don't see the light.
Oh, sorry about that. So once we've looked at the facilities and made the determination that a pipeline extension is the adequate method of service for the development, we can take a look at the process for that. So the development services supervisor would conduct a multi-department staff review and present the project for to the other departments such as planning and design and construction management, for example, and get input, operations, of course, to get input on the potential where this new pipeline is going, etc., and review those, the project details, make a recommendation. Hey, yes, we're on board with the pipeline extension, or no, we think there should be an alternative to that. If we get the thumbs up from staff review, I'll prepare a preliminary design and cost estimate, and our cost, the cost charged is based on the materials needed for the project and inspection cost, our inspector will work with the contractor to put it in. Any connection fees due, any system improvements, as well as we just discussed. Then, once I provide that estimate to the developer, they give me the thumbs up to seek board approval. So I come back to the operations committee, much like today, present the project. If the project is approved, I then will collect the deposited, the deposit from the developer, and we'll begin work on the construction drawings, water facility construction drawings that the contractor will work off of. The the installing contractor selected by the the developer type A or C34 license required. They'll be added to the pipeline extension agreement with an addendum that binds them to all the requirements of the agreement itself. Part of the process is financial requirements from the developer and the contractor that include proof of insurance, maintenance and performance guarantees. And once we've met all that, I pass the project on down to our construction management group, where an inspector is assigned to handle the next part, the the construction of the project.
So this one's gonna have a pretty good size connection fee.
This one, yes.
Got it. Can't remember off the top.
Just to be clear, the connection fee is based on the demand that is expected of the development. So that's typically about $40,000 an acre foot. The pipeline extension agreement is additive costs for the pipeline installation materials and our inspection services.
Catch just one quick question on that. Is this the same process we would follow for reclaimed water, recycled water, if it was in within that distribution area?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah. And the connection fee is based on buying into our existing asset portfolio.
Right. So there are a few resolutions that are associated with a pipeline extension agreement. So we'll take a look at a couple of those now. The limited purpose line resolution. I believe I I presented one of those last month's meeting will allow the party that financed the pipeline to recover some of the cost if the new pipeline run makes service available to a property which did not have service available before. The fees contained in the pipeline extension agreement resolution confirm that the fees paid listed in the pipeline extension agreement will be paying for some existing infrastructure, potential future infrastructure, and confirm I'm working on current construction costs for the materials, etc. Impending peril is based on the site's geology. We use the state geology maps regarding potential earth movement. So they're categorized, I believe, one through four, if based on the potential for earth movement. If it if it fits a certain score, we'll add the impending peril resolution and use welded steel pipe to mitigate the potential of the earth movement. And finally, certifying review of any SEQA documentation, for example, environmental impact report or mitigate a negative deck, for example. So now, we'll, we can talk about a few of the highlights of pipeline extensions. Obviously, most commonly done for residential subdivisions. The timetable can vary. It's a bit of a tennis match between I get my part done, I hit the ball over the net, and the applicant developer has to get their part done, and the contractor, etc. Six months is a good is a good timetable to carry. It is the pipeline and all water facilities generally in the in the agreement are installed by the contractor with district inspection. We provide the materials up to and including the meter and meter box. Some of the latest projects we have, the Talis Reserve in Lucas Valley, that may have changed names. They they often do that by the time they get installed, and Oak Shores, which is right here in Corder Madera, Paradise Drive. And so without that, that ends my quick informational presentation on pipeline extensions. I'm happy to answer any questions about those, if you have any at this time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. Sorry, Larry, one minute. Just about how many do we get in a year?
There's an ebb and flow, but generally, you'll see anywhere between three and five. You know, the the development in the area, of course, Marin is fairly built out, and and some of the properties that aren't, there's usually a reason behind behind that. So somebody has to be very very dedicated for some of these properties to to try and develop them.
Like this one.
Yeah, I think this was approved in 2016.
This is a hot potato. Jed, any questions?
No.
All good, understood. I appreciate the cover.
Okay.
Fantastic. Okay.
So we'll move on to the actual agreement that we're wanting to look at today.
Yes, we we have an example. Today, we have a pipeline extension agreement for 3825 Paradise Drive in Tiburon. It's known as the Alta Robles subdivision. Now, this is an approximately 52 acre property being subdivided into 14 lots. There's an existing home, which will remain on one of the lots, 13 new lots created. It'll be a single family dwellings and detached ADUs are currently proposed for each of those lots. Now, the, as we mentioned, the project was originally approved in 2016 by the town.
Do you know if they're intending to build the ADUs when they build the houses, or they just, they're going to? Oh, that's interesting.
That's the that's the proposal at this point, yes.
There are presentations that you're showing from here.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Jed.
It's just wondering, is there a presentation or you just that you're talking to right now, or just verbal?
Not yet.
No, it's just a verbal on the staff report. Yeah, there's a map included if you'd like to see it.
Okay. Let's see. The the location of the project, the lot two lots, so one property, begins at Hacienda Drive. It was a little bit up the Tiburon Ridge line and then down to Paradise Drive. The homes, there's the size will vary through the proposals, but anywhere from 4,000 to 8,000 square feet. Small detached ADU is about 500 square feet. Average lot size, I think, is about 1.4 acres for the properties. And the the Tiburon Fire Protection District set the fire flow requirement of 1,000 gallons per minute. So taking that into consideration, the system to meet that fire flow requirement, we're going to install about 3,400 feet of eight inch pipe. We're gonna upgrade our existing pipe in Hacienda to 12 inch. That's about 1,400 feet will be upgraded. I'll be seven fire hydrants as part of the project. And then an individual meter for each single family, as well as a dedicated meter for each ADU per our code requirements. So purchase of additional water allotment is also part of it as the as the site had only the single family. So that's all included in the pipeline extension agreement. So I present that project today and ask the committee to to review and refer to the board for full approval, the Alta Robles Pipeline Extension Agreement.
Thank you, Joseph. Any questions?
Joseph, I the additional water allotment, can you just say what that what that entails?
Yes. Each property in our district has an annual allotment of water assigned either by historical use or purchased through our connection fee. So this property had one single family, I believe, with a with a an historical entitlement, I believe. I'd have to double check that. But with it, so that this development has sits on that allotment. So the the allotment necessary will serve the the new development, the 13 new residences and 13 new ADUs.
And I should note, it's calculated based on the number of plumbing fixtures, the irrigation that's gonna be installed. So it's 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 a very detailed calculation on how many acre feet of water per year we expect that they they will need.
And and this is, these are the numbers that we use to to go back and evaluate impacts on existing supply, the requirements for new supply that you that may come up with additional housing allotments.
That's correct. It's currently the cost for the new allotment is based on our existing asset portfolio and the total cost, the value of that asset portfolio. So the connection fee is a portion of that. But going into the future, we will be looking at, you know, will we need additional water supply, in which case there's a cost associated with that. And so we will be doing a new connection fee study in the near future. It's in the budget for next year.
It's give or take an acre foot per house, give or take. And these are a little bigger, maybe they're a little higher than that, but
Yes.
It it's a chunk of change. In Tiburon, you're looking at like pushing a hundred K per house for connection fees between the water and sewer. So it adds up pretty fast. And that's in addition to the the pipeline extension.
It's correct.
So at least you get the benefit of the new line in Paradise. When we replace, right? That's convenient.
Timing was good for that.
Yeah.
When you're calculating the water use for new construction, I would imagine we have different regulations for water conservation toilets and and input. Does that go into your calculation for how much water allotment these houses should have? Or do you look at a typical house currently in Marin?
Well, number one, the the estimate of the annual consumption is based on the area average from consumption records in a study that the performed by consultant by the district. So yes, we're looking at the neighborhood consumption average when we're looking at estimating the annual consumption for each single family. And in the pipeline extension agreement, the development is bound by all current water conservation rules and requirements.
Including those of the city of Tiburon, which are probably the ones that are most restrictive in this situation.
But the neighborhood would have I think I think that's maybe a higher use neighborhood, but it it also does not have some of the conservation building requirements that these will have. So it should be less. Right?
We actually do require a landscape review of their plan set that goes to our conservation department to make sure that it complies with our water efficiency ordinances.
So we have local low flow toilets, and I mean, there's there's all sorts of things that these new houses will have that existing may not have, right?
Yeah, that comes out of Tiburon. That's what I'm talking about. Tiburon is the one that actually slams the toilet flow. To sell a house in Tiburon, you have to meet those standards before you sell the house. So all the houses get brought up or installed in addition to what we have.
Yes, the building inspector will make sure that development is in compliance with current plumbing code and a water efficient fixtures.
But Larry, I think what I'm trying to say is that there's a lot of existing ones that haven't been sold, so they haven't been upgraded to lower conservation.
No, I don't think that's true, Jed. So I recall we're something like 90% of the toilets have been switched over in Marin through our rebate program.
So there's other, there's other regulations besides that. Okay. I I love the idea of doing that study in the next year, Crystal. That that makes a lot of sense. And
I think the thing that I that I'm considering about this is the is the, I'm not so concerned about the the interior water use, it's the exterior landscaping water use. These are this is very low density, you know, and there's a lot of landscaping that seems like it would likely be associated with each property. And so I have concern about just, you know, at an acre foot per lot, that's a lot of water. That would make them a tier, probably a tier three consumer.
No, I don't think so.
I don't know.
Acre foot's kind of the normal usage. I think these are probably higher than that.
Now, each each house will have its own service connection, so it'll be a single family home.
Yeah. Sorry, Derek Schmidt, there there are 14 homes. It's about eight and a half acre feet. So they're around 0.6 acre foot. It is, you know, classically, you would assign maybe a third of an acre foot per household, and that would be considered quite a bit for Marin.
Yeah.
For our service area.
But these are big houses.
But these are large, large lots, generally speaking.
Yeah. Yeah.
And each each lot will be required to go through the water conservation plan review process, so they'll they'll meet all current conditions of a of a landscape irrigation system that we have in place.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Other comment?
There are none.
Okay, I need a motion to refer this to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks. Okay, number three.
Chair Russell, just a point of note, your discretion will do the minutes at the end.
We did the minutes.
No, did we do the minutes?
We did the minutes.
I thought that was public comment. The agenda, we did the agenda, and then if there were any public comments, not, but we didn't do the minutes.
We can, we can do them now, or we can do them at the end.
Need a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Director Smith.
Hi.
Vice Chair Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Russell.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, now, number three.
So again, this this one's gonna be presented by Zachary Talbot, our one of our engineers in design.
And he actually exists. This is the first time he's been in the office doing this in two years or three years.
Three years almost since, yeah, pre pre COVID. So it's good to see everyone in person. As Crystal mentioned, my name is Zach Talbot. I'm associate engineer in the design section. This morning, I'm here to present the Warren Springs Road Slade Repair Project. This project's located on Warren Springs Road on Marin watershed land, approximately 400 feet from Phoenix Lake. The project will install a new 60-foot long soldier pile wall, which will stabilize Warren Springs Road that partially failed in January of this year due to storm events. Warren Springs Road is important because it is the primary access road to Ross Reservoir, and there's an existing 18-inch welded steel water transmission main, which is also located in the road. This transmission main is critical for the conveyance of treated water from Bon Tempe Treatment Plant to Ross Reservoir and then on into the Ross Ross Valley area. My engineer's estimate for this project is $225,000, and bids will be opened on June 27. The project is scheduled to last about 100 days with the completion date of October 19 of this year. If all bid documents are acceptable, staff will make recommendation at the July 11 board meeting for contract award. The recommended action is for review and referral to a future regular bimonthly meeting of the Board of Directors with the operations committee recommendation to proceed with the project. With that, I could answer any questions.
Yeah, Zach, it's 60 feet long.
It's 60 feet long.
How tall?
The maximum height is about nine feet from a construction bench, which will be required to install. And because of that height, there's a required redwood guard rail, which will be installed along with the wall, which will match our existing guard rails we have out on the watershed.
Okay, any other questions? Any public comment?
There are none. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Roger Roberts, please, if you can give me a second so I can put the timer on. Mr. Roberts, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
This isn't really an issue with this particular project, but I'm curious as to what's the timing for the replacement of the Ross Valley Reservoir in this connection.
Would you like me to answer?
Go ahead, sure.
Yeah, that's a much bigger question. Currently, that's one of the projects we have slated for bond funding, and so we'll have been, we will be having further board discussion on replacement of Ross Reservoir at a future board meeting.
So this does not abut the exist, that plan. Is that true or not true? This is, this is just a connect.
I understand. Yeah, no, the location of this slide is much further downhill than any proposed site for new tanks to replace Ross Reservoir.
That was my, that was my concern. Thank you.
And Crystal, is it true that this road would provide access to those sites?
That's, this is correct, yes.
Yeah, that's what he was talking. I think that's where he triggered his question, was that comment that it's a road to Ross Reservoir.
Yeah, this is the, it's a primary road, and we've actually sized the wall to accommodate heavy equipment for future projects.
At least it's nice we can access off the public highways.
Correct.
There are no further comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I need a motion to refer to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And I think that's it.
One more.
What?
One more, item four.
Item four, oh, way in the back, huh? There we go. Item four, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So this item is the Phase Two Spillway Condition Assessment Project, and I have hug. Okay, thanks. So this item is the phase two spillway condition assessment project, and I have Hagar Nagash here to present the item.
Good morning, directors. My name is Hagar Nagash, Assistant Engineer in Design. This morning, I'm here to present the spillway condition assessment phase two project. This project is located at Peter's Dam, Seager's Dam, and Sulu Huli Dam. This project is a continuation of the phase one of the nonstructural spillway repair project where the dams were inspected and surface defects were found and repaired. The face to spillway condition assessment will further investigate the dam spillways by using GPR to scan the dam spillway slabs and look for voids by conducting core drilling for small probe holes to video inspect the underside of the spillway slabs. And by cleaning out spillway subdrains and video inspect the subdrains on all three dams mentioned above as part of the district's capital improvement program. My engineer's estimate for this project is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and is scheduled to last a hundred and twenty days with a completion date of November fifteen, twenty twenty three. A district will receive an open bid for this project on July eleventh. If bid documents are acceptable, staff will make recommendation at a future regular scheduled board meeting for contract award. The staff recommended action for this review and is a referral to the board with the operations committee's recommendations to proceed with this project. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Did we make a decision on whether we're going to purchase a GPR or not?
We actually did purchase one and we had a couple of guys go to Nevada last month to some training. They're still working on refining their skills. It's like looking at an ultrasound sound scan. So it's
Or an X-ray.
Takes it takes some time and and training and with the device in order to feel comfortable with it. But yeah, we did purchase it in the hopes of, as you recall, reducing the number of potholes that we would have to do ahead of paving projects to look at the depth of the pipe.
Plus to avoid the rental cost of the GPR from the individual contractors. Yeah, you hear them talk on TV, you know, like the GPR, we get the GPR, right? It's like it doesn't look anything. It it's almost unintelligible without training because it's just kind of a mush of information. And obvious things they can see, like if there's a big depression or something like that, but the regular stuff is very sophisticated. So when we discussed this last time, I guess it was on the last round of this or the other, or maybe it was a preliminary of this.
Preliminary, yeah, this is the GPR.
So what what they're doing here is they're actually looking at the spillways in depth to see if the concrete's okay and that kind of thing. So we're trying to make sure that the division of dam safety is going to stay happy with us and that we can protect the environment and the dams with the appropriate spillways. Now, are you getting into the possibility of the raising them? Have you have you looked at that in terms of this project or will that be ground into it?
No, that's that's Paul's project. He has an RFP currently out for proposals on that.
Yeah, and understand, guys, that it's one of those things that sounds good. And in the case of North Marin, they have a very special situation with this notch in the dam, which is very unusual. And the problem with spillways is they have to work one hundred percent of the time unguided by humans. You don't want action to be done for spillway to work because it's too late. By the time that happens, you're in trouble. So if you have to go out and open something and then it doesn't open, now you're in world hurt. So that's the problem with yucking with the spillways there. There's much more science behind the spillway than it may appear to be. It isn't just an arbitrary elevation. It's there to ensure that the dam is never overtopped. That's why they got so excited about Oroville. They they I don't think they were particularly excited about the spillway. But they were very excited about the water going over the top of the dam because of earth fill. And then then you get into dam failure. And I can't even imagine how many people would be killed if Oroville Dam failed. But that's why they were using helicopters to fly in ten ton boulders. You you just imagine what that costs. And place them into the spillway where it had failed. So we're trying to prevent that same kind of failure. That we don't want the concrete to peel off or anything to happen. So this is very important project. Any public comment?
Uh, yes, Mr. Roger Roberts, please.
Yes, supposing they do find a vacancy somewhere or erosion under the surface. What happens next? And what what? What what do you do? I guess you get somebody in to fix it and, you know, does that become a capital project of substance or is that just routine maintenance? Is this going to be a very expensive process if they find something?
Yes. If there's voids found under the spillway, I'm sure it will involve an extensive capital design project. It may entail pressure grouting. It may entail replacing parts of the spillway. So yes, we will have more to report on that after this condition assessment is complete.
We found something at one of them, right?
We had some nonstructural cracks on the surface of the spillway. And so we did chip those out and coat the rebar underneath and 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 basically put more grout in on top. So yeah, those, but DSOD did come out and take a look. They weren't structural. They were just surface cracking.
That's dam safety she's talking about. The state keeps track of all the dams for dam failure. Cool. Okay. Now we're almost done after you refer this to the board. So I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Now we have a closed session.
Yes, and we just need to ask whether there are any public comments on the closed session items? There are none. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, guys. The closed session was adjourned at eleven thirty. No reportable action. Yeah, we're done. Yep.
Have a good weekend, folks.